I apologize for our lateness. Thank you for being so patient, but we're here now. And there's nothing to report out of closed session. And let's pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, adoption and approval of the agenda for tonight, December 10th, 2019.
That'll move.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask board to pull the action item 10.1.2 on the student attendance calendar. We need to do a little bit more work in that, in this particular area.
I need to pull that item.
Wait a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then all in favor of the revised agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's a good point. Okay, Students of the Month and Students of the 2019 Fall Semester. Okay, let's start with Kenwood Junior. Olivia Klein? Olivia Klein?
Going twice.
Okay, I guess we'll see her in January.
In the next decade.
William Carruthers? Here, it's not pretty for the camera.
The teachers of Kenwood have chosen William for Student of the Month because he's an exemplary student with an infectious positive attitude. William's teachers had wonderful things to say about him, including his science teacher, Ms. Crozier, who says William is a highly motivated and hard worker. He turns in quality work and is always willing to help others. Mr. Raya echoed this statement, saying Will is an excellent worker. He is always in a good mood and makes everyone around him happy and just a little harder, and work a little harder. Shannon Rutter, William's math teacher, reports William has a good sense of humor, is respectful and helpful to others. He has a very strong work ethic. William shows maturity and determination in his approach to both school and athletics. Jamie Woldemar, William's English teacher, supports this as she states William is able to listen to constructive feedback on work and take it without getting defensive. William enjoys school and has a positive attitude for learning. As a member of the Baccafell Jets hockey team for the past eight years, William says he has relied on his intuition and perseverance to perform at his best. William and his family travel often for hockey practices, games, and tournaments, mostly in the Bay Area and even as far as Minnesota. When asked how he has the time to maintain such high grades, William says he usually does his homework in the car. What dedication. Sports is an important part of Will's life. He says it has taught him to keep going during challenges and rely on his team members. William has impressively maintained a 4.0 GPA during his entire two years at Kenwood and is very proud of his good grades and effort he has put into maintaining such high standards. William is an excellent campus citizen, fantastic student, and wonderful team member. Congratulations, William.
Okay, Pedaluma Junior, hi.
One of my favorite students.
Hi.
Hi.
Jennifer Mota Mahia?
We are very proud to present Jennifer Jenny Mota Mahia as one of our December 2019 Students of the Month. Jenny is a family-first person with a deep sense of kindness. She was born locally on January 23rd, 2006, and we are lucky to have her.
Estamos orgullosos de presentar a Jenny Mota Mahia como una de nuestras mejores estudiantes del mes de diciembre de 2019. Jenny es una persona que pone la familia primero con un profundo sentido de amabilidad. Ella nació aquí el 23 de enero 2006 y somos muy afortunados de tenerla.
Jenny is academically strong. She strives to do her best and maintain a straight A average. Her original language was Spanish, and she has worked hard to master English well enough to be reclassified as fully proficient. Jenny looks forward to continuing her academic efforts and being one of the first in her family to attend university. Her intent is to find a career where she can help those who are less fortunate so that they can have a better life. One of Jenny's teachers has to say about her, Jenny is a positive force in the classroom. She's incredibly hardworking and congenial. Jenny thanks me at the end of every class. She is respectful toward all school staff members and is inclusive of her peers. Jenny is a dedicated student and an excellent role model for her classmates. The sentiment about Jenny is echoed by all who know her.
Jenny es académicamente fuerte. Ella se esfuerza por hacer lo mejor y mantener siempre un promedio de A. Su lengua rica es española y ha trabajado duro para dominar bien el inglés para ser clasificada como completamente competente. Jenny espera continuar con su esfuerzo académico y ser una de las primeras en su familia en ir a la universidad. Ella intenta encontrar una carrera donde puede ayudar a aquellos menos afortunados para que puedan tener una mejor vida. Uno de los maestros de Jenny tiene esto que decir sobre ella. Jenny es una fuerza constituida en la clase. Ella trabaja increíblemente duro y es amigable. Jenny siempre me da las gracias al final de la clase. Ella es respetuosa con todo el personal de la escuela e incluso con sus compañeros de clase. Todos los que la conocen piensan lo mismo de Jenny.
Beyond her academics, Jenny enjoys other activities within and outside of school. To keep herself in shape, Jenny participates in sports. She earned a medal in basketball in sixth grade and also won first place at the Westside Relays in the 4x100, earning a red ribbon from her school. Jenny is part of the yearbook committee. Her extracurricular activities include being part of a church youth group and she helps her godmother teach her religious classes class on Saturdays. Jenny enjoys spending time with her family and playing sports with her siblings. She also likes to draw and cook.
Más allá de lo académico, Jenny goza de otras actividades dentro y fuera de la escuela. Para estar en forma, Jenny participa en deportes. Ella se ganó un medalla en basketball en el sexto grado y también ganó el primer lugar junto con su equipo de cuatro en el Westside Relays en una carrera de cuatro por cien metros. Y se ganó un estupendo robo para su escuela. Jenny es parte del comité del anuario. Sus actividades fuera de la escuela incluyen ser parte del grupo de jóvenes de la iglesia y ayudar a su madrina con clases de religión los sábados. Jenny disfruta del tiempo que pasa con su familia y jugando deportes con sus hermanos. A ella le gusta también pintar y cosinar.
Her mother is very proud of Jenny. She says Jenny is an exceptional girl who has a great desire to improve herself, achieve her goals, and be able to help others. She always does her best and works hard in her personal life and her studies. She always has a smile to give and many ideas that brighten your day. She has a great heart.
Su mamá está muy orgullosa de Jenny. Ella dice Jenny es una niña excepcional que tiene un gran deseo de superarse y cumplir con sus metas y poder ayudar a otros. Siempre hace lo mejor que pueda. Trabaja duro en su vida personal y en sus estudios. Siempre está sonriente y con muchas ideas que alegran el día. Tiene un gran corazón.
We are very pleased to honor this sincere, caring, intelligent young woman, Jennifer Mota Mahia, at the board and are proud to have her represent Pedaluma Junior High School as a Student of the Month.
Estamos contentos en honrar a esta sincera, amable, e inteligente jovencita, Jennifer Mota Mahia, en la junta de directores. Y orgullosos que ella representa Pedaluma Junior High School como la estudiante del mes.
Okay, we have a lot of absent kids today. We're gonna move on to Casa Grande.
She's in eighth grade.
Oh, Kayla.
Kayla's right there. Nice.
Kayla Corca is a hard-working, dedicated student. Since middle school, it has been Kayla's dream to one day become a published author or poet or a professional editor. She has always loved to read and write, hence her current involvement in the school's magazine, The Casa Revista. As extended content editor of the magazine and a member of the editorial board, Kayla spends at least five hours per week working on the publication. Kayla is passionate about journalism for the same reason she wants to major in English. Writers and journalists are both responsible for telling stories and shedding light on important issues. These are her core passions. Kayla is determined to use her love for English to share her voice for the world and help others do the same. In whatever manner it may be, as a writer, editor, or journalist, she hopes to represent various marginalized groups that need their stories told, such as the El Titi Q plus and the Latinx communities. She identifies with both of these groups. Kayla will be attending Scripps College next fall as she has been accepted with a full four-year scholarship. She knows that studying English in college will cause her love for the subject to flourish and her writing abilities to improve. She believes that this is the first step towards making a difference in her community and maybe even the world.
Our next student isn't here tonight. She's a calculus fan, but I'd like to read about her anyways because she's such a wonderful person. It's Brooke of Lurie. When given a task, Brooke gives an artistic outlook on the situation. She loves to draw and has participated in theater for the majority of her life. Currently, she is serving on the editorial board as the design editor of her school's news magazine, The Casa Revista. Since the publication switched from a newspaper to a magazine, she has worked diligently to find a way to make the fresh format work and adapt the content to the new platform. With every issue that comes out, she continues to learn what does and does not work, which she then applies to the next issue. Brooke is also interested in politics and the structure of government and hopes to study either law or political science in college so that she may participate in the legal system when she's older. In her free time, Brooke enjoys playing various Nintendo games on the Switch or DS, going out to relax around town, or studying with friends wherever they can find a spot. Because she has night classes four days of the week, she spends a great deal of time in coffee shops between hours. She enjoys the atmosphere, caffeine, and free Wi-Fi. Brooke is also a wonderful friend of mine who I've known for a long time, and she totally deserves this. She's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Pedaluma High School? Miko? I know what I have. Miko?
Miko Brown is a senior at Pedaluma High School. He is a very motivated and successful student in the classroom with a current GPA of 5.0 and a cumulative GPA of 4.3. He also has been a member of the National Honor Society throughout high school and has very strong test scores. He has a strong passion for math and computer science, taking the most advanced courses available in each subject. Outside the classroom, Miko is a very engaged student. He's the director of publicity for Junior States of America at Pedaluma High School, leaving the social media accounts and participating in debates. He's also a lead leader for the second year in a row assisting freshmen with navigating the difficult transition into high school. Miko is a math tutor for students at Pedaluma High School. He helps students understand mathematical concepts and succeed in their classes so that they can learn to do the work on their own. One of his favorite experiences was his engineering internship at Sonoma State University where he led a research project with assistance from a PhD professor and used university hell of a lab equipment to analyze light waves at frequencies not visible to the human eye. After school, Miko attends rowing practice six days a week on the Pedaluma River. Throughout rowing, he is qualified for the Youth National Championships his sophomore year and was selected to attend a month-long camp in Sarasota, Florida last summer where he got to compete against the rest of the nation. Miko also has a strong commitment to service. He has spent many hours volunteering as a rowing coach, creating and delivering food boxes to low-income families and mentoring freshman students at Pedaluma High School. In college, Miko hopes to earn a dual degree in computer science and business where he can apply his technology to the business world.
Okay, now onto PAX, Pedaluma Southern Turner School. Who do you want? Samuel Cooper Smith?
Sammy's helpful and positive personality is noteworthy by anyone who interacts with him. His participation in the classroom is always purposeful, thought-provoking, and consistently shown. Sammy's desire to do well in school has allowed him to keep a 4.0 GPA at all times due to his extreme level of dedication. Classmates have a running joke with Sammy as he loves to use advanced vocabulary that keeps everyone wondering how he knows such words. Sammy was part of the PAX robotics team that won the Sonoma County Robotics Challenge. And outside of school, Sammy serves volunteer hours with Friends of the Pedaluma River to help our community see the importance of land stewardship. While doing a great job at balancing schoolwork, Sammy is a valued team member on the club soccer team. Sammy's past teachers report that he is always smiling and excited about what was being taught and is an overall awesome kid. PAX is grateful to have the opportunity to teach a student with Sammy's dedication and positive approach to learning. And he has such a kind heart. And as a principal, he's always smiling, always saying hi, and always generous with his time. Great job, Sammy.
And Julia?
Julia Bylaw. Julia is a very eager and willing student. She has a passion for all subjects that clearly shines through with her very high-scoring GPA. She is one who self-advocates for her learning and isn't bothered by the extra time or steps it may take to understand a topic. When tasked with group work, she is always positive in understanding of her peers' opinions and knows how to keep the group organized and working. Julia strives to be involved in the community by serving volunteer hours at the Marin Humane Society. And when she isn't serving volunteer hours or being dedicated to school, she's playing club soccer. Julia is a valued student in the Food Service elective course, always eager to expand her worldly knowledge. She was part of the PAX robotics team that won the Sonoma County Robotics Challenge. Her presence on the campus is always positive, and we can count on her to be helping hand or friend to anyone in need. Julia's past teachers express that she is an exceptional student who always went above and beyond to produce work worthy of a student much older than herself. Julia's all-around attitude is one that stands out on the middle school campus for being reliable, dedicated, and kind. We are so thankful to have Julia as a student at PAX.
All right. Good job. That was the best. All right. And moving on to Ms. Thomas. Yes, we're gonna take a three-minute break, so those 5.0 rate. What did I say? Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm just not reading this right. Student reports to the board, Kenwood.
You're still allowed to lead. That's okay.
Yeah, you can vote.
So October 8th was the last board report, and here's what happened since then. So the annual pledge of God party on October 11th, we raised $2,000 that goes toward paying for the end-of-year activities and the teacher grants. Our first academic rally on October 18th, there were awards that were given, games that were played, and school spirit was on full display.
Who's that wrapped up?
That was our science teacher, Mr. Radke. And then there was the neon dance that was also the '80s and '70s dance. So the neon trip kids dressed up in both. The dance was very large, with tons of students showing their neon and babies. And then for athletics, girls' basketball and the cross-country team have come to an end, but the boys' basketball and girls' volleyball team are underway currently. Healthy Kids surveys were administered to all students in history classes starting on November 8th. The information is valuable and reviewed every year by the teachers. The KJHS CARES mission then guides the life skill lessons toward responding to data collected by the survey. It has been a strange second-grading period with students and staff at KJHS missing a total of seven instructional days. Two were for power outages, and the five were for the Kinkade fires. Eighth graders got to tour Casa campus last month and visited classes to get a feel for what their lives would be like next year as a freshman. KJHS and Casa administration continue to meet as an East Side think-tank group discussing vertical articulation, academic support, the 7-12 program, and promotion graduation rates. Sixth graders from 10 feeder elementary schools toured KJHS this week. They are so nervous, and it is nice to see the excitement in their eyes. A big shout-out goes to Marcia's short transportation for helping to coordinate the busing of all these schools to KJHS. The sixth-grade open house occurred December 4th. The event was well-attended, and parents' minds were put at ease by the presentations and opportunity to get their questions answered before the student becomes a cold. The items listed above are in addition to amazing teachers and learning that take place at KJHS every day. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
The KJHS events, lunchtime activities were put on by leadership. I was personally one of them running. I think I ran the limbo. And that was fun. A lot of people got into it and were participating. Those are October Students of the Month. Nightmare on Puberty Street. This program taught students how to resist and overcome negative peer pressure, how to cope with depression and thoughts of suicide. That changes occurring during puberty and early adolescence are normal and part of development. The importance of seeking help from a trusted adult when going through stressful or difficult situations. How community resources can help them get through stressful and difficult situations. Eighth graders toured Pedaluma High School. Those are the November Students of the Month. There were guest speakers from the Pedaluma Wetlands Alliance. I went to that, and it was very interesting. We got to hear from the author and two other people who helped her about some of the animals and other creatures that were in the wetlands. The Mindful Morning is working on sand trays in the library.
What is Mindful Morning?
It's a thing on Fridays, I think, and people go to it. And it's like just a way to get through the week or go somewhere after the week is over to reduce stress from. The band performed at the tree lighting ceremony. The Benton Bash fundraiser and planning. The Benton Bash was really fun. We had bounce houses and cozy decorating and a video game truck all come to help entertain us. And if you donated money, then you would get to go to the Benton Bash. That was a good way to make people want to go. The girls' basketball and the cross-country season ended. Our seventh-grade girls' basketball team had one of our best records in recent history as they went 9-3, which tied them for second place overall. The eighth-grade girls went 4-6 overall, which ended up in fourth place overall out of seven teams. With only six runners, our girls' cross-country team finished the season in third place overall. Out of 72 runners, PJHS took 11th, 12th, and individual spots overall. The boys had a much better turnout, which helped us come second place in the league. The PJHS boys took three of the eight individual places in the league finals. The boys' basketball and girls' volleyball team both started. The boys' basketball and girls' volleyball seasons have just started. The seventh and eighth-grade boys' basketball teams have a 1-1 record and start to start the year. The seventh-grade girls' volleyball team has been on fire to begin as they have not lost a game 4-0 in their first two matches of the year. The eighth graders have also shown some serious improvement from last year as they begin their season 1-1 overall. What's happening in class? The Spanish eighth graders, I believe, is reading and presenting a play. Ms. Brooks Long's class is doing outdoor education in science where they're planting, I believe, 72 native plants in the front simple for our native animals. The Breakout Box in English, I was a part of that. It was fun. It was a topic about the book that we read, and we had to find clues about the book. The World Religion Presentations in History. I'm in Ms. Ross's class, so I got to do that. And it was fun. They were making masterpieces in art class. They were also learning about Monet. And the robotics, Lego robotics in the library. I was a part of the Drag Race challenge, and I completed it. And I...
Look at that picture up there.
They're working on essays in English. The sixth-grade academy is learning about science in Bode Gavay. We were learning about MLA citation formatting in history class, which was very interesting. And really helpful?
Helpful, yes. Interesting was polite.
Yeah. They were making music in band. The SSR program to promote reading circulation has increased by 61%, and they did a book review snowball fight. What's a book review? I honestly don't know because I was not part of that.
Oh, it looks like they write it. It looks like they just write it. So hopefully not dissipating each other.
And you're invited to the winter concert tomorrow at 7:00 PM in the PJHS multi. The seventh grade preview night is this Thursday at 6:00 PM. Yeah, thank you.
Now, we will take a five-minute break. So all the students come over. Thank you.
That's right, you were writing about mock trial. That was one of the essays I submitted.
That's right. Oh, that's good, you got it full-blown!
I did, yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to come so.
You're welcome, I'm so glad you did.
Of course.
Of course.
I taught your daughter last year, Jasmine, in our history course. I don't know, you've never met me, but I kind of know about you.
She had so much fun. She loved it there.
So did you revise your essay?
I did, yes, yeah. It's your feedback, I revised it, and yeah, it was one of the ones I got.
I think I should have.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much.
I'm so glad it was helpful.
It really was. Everyone loves you, too. You were one of our favorite people.
Well, nothing like an, you know, English teacher to be able to go back. Well, I, you know, it was a great group of kids, it was wonderful to meet you and to see what you were doing. You have so much confidence, I just know you're gonna... And script sounds like such a great fit.
Yeah, I definitely can see it.
Yeah, so beautiful, too.
It is, I toured it last spring.
Yeah, my daughter applied there, and it was just, I had never been there, and I just thought, wow, this is beautiful. It was the prettiest of all those.
Yes, I agree.
So, good luck. I will see you at graduation, if not before. Is this your mom?
Yes, this is.
Hi, I'm Alex. She was so happy when she saw you coming out. Thank you so much. She did it.
And then you're going to the house.
Then there's the box.
Okay, here we go.
First interim, Chris Thomas.
I know that this is the topic that everybody has been waiting for all season. It's really hard to follow, student reports.
You forget you're talking to five nerds now, so, yeah.
So are you budget nerds?
I'm not, but.
I'm trying to convert Santa.
A half, are there?
Yeah, there we go. I do have some extra reminders here, if people want to follow along, and if you, you know, so I like.
Can I ask a really, really quick question? If I have questions, do I wait until the action item, or do I do it now? Now.
Okay, so, as you know, we come to the board about four times a year with financial information. We bring two interim reports starting the year. This is the first of two interim reports called First Interim. It's reporting to you our financial position as of October 31st. We will be coming back in March for Second Interim, reporting to you how we look as of January 31st. So, I'm just going to orient you to the binder really quickly, and then we'll pretty much focus on spreadsheet. So, the first page in the binder basically just talks about what First Interim is. The narrative and assumptions we're going to refer back to, but this is kind of a detailed narrative talking about stuff going on at the state level, et cetera. Gives a little bit of information about the LCAP. And then it goes into very detailed budget assumptions that we use to not only build this budget, but also to do our multi-projections. This is really what the Kami Office focuses on, is they go through and do their evaluation of this report. The comparative spreadsheets are where we're going to focus most of our attention tonight. We'll get to those in a moment. Certifications, we're bringing to you this report tonight with a positive certification, because we believe we can meet our financial obligations for the current year and to subsequent vicillaries. The general fund tab is just that, is general fund. That goes into, it puts in the state SACS standards, the tax code structure format, how we're required to report. The spreadsheet will take that same data and put it a little bit more user-friendly. So that's why I focus on those. We've got all other funds here, so if you want to know, our building funds are done, cafeteria fund, adult education fund, they're all here. Remember, we're two separate districts, so even though we count for things separately, like our building fund or our bond proceeds, they collapse down into one fund for these purposes. Supplemental information, we'll also be referring to, I just want to describe what's here. The first couple pages really talk about our average daily attendance, how that breaks up between charter and non-charter, multi-projections, which we're going to refer to. And then, most importantly, there's a 26-page report toward the back called criteria and standards. And that's where the system really does some trend analysis, how we look from the ADA, from our beginning for balances, contributions, et cetera. Okay? We won't focus on that, it is there for your reading pleasure, okay? So let's go back to the spreadsheet tab. So, our budget is broken into three major parts. The unrestricted budget, the restricted budget, those are those sources of funding that have strings attached, and then the combined budget, which looks at both. We're going to focus mainly tonight on unrestricted, because if there's any discretion or flexibility, it usually resides within the unrestricted general fund. So the first page is our local revenues, and we're basically taking our adopted budget and comparing it to this current budget revision, and then showing you a variance in column C about how it's changed. So you'll notice in the first section, that is our LCFF calculation, so that represents it. And all of those various line items within the LCFF are the various buckets that fill up those LCFF calculations. So you can see various property taxes, et cetera. And remember, when we go through and do our LCFF calculations, we do them for seven organizations, basically, our five charters, our elementary district, our high school district, and they all collapse into this. So there's seven different calculations that go on behind the scenes with this. This is a summary of those seven organizations. You can see there might be significant variances between the categories, but really, the most important is the bottom line, the total LCFF, and how has that changed? And in this particular instance, it's gone down about $37,000. So why is that? Number one, we're projecting our ADA. We now know what our enrollment is, and we know it by category, by grade span. So we basically are projecting how we think our average daily attendance is going to come in by the end of next March, which is P2, and that's what we're funded on. We have a long way to go, so we use trend analysis to say, okay, what is our attendance rate typically by grade level? Is it 94%, 98%, or anything in between? So we take those projections of ADA. In this case, we're projecting fewer ADA, or 3/3 less ADA than before. And then we take our unduplicated projections. We don't have a certified unduplicated count yet. We're still collecting that data and sending it to CalPads, so we're assuming, we're making some assumptions on that. And then we calculate basically what those LCFF looks like for those seven and put it here. The change is mostly because of the reduction in our projected ADA. So, yeah.
So that changes the projection, how frequently does the money come in, actually, given this?
That's a great question. So when you look at 8021 and below, 8021 to 8047, those are local property taxes. We get those in two or three major increments. We get our first big one in about a week or so. So whenever people pay their property taxes after that deadline of December 10th.
Yeah.
Which, by the way, is today. So hopefully y'all put that in the mail. Then we, then they give us our chunk, or the first is about 55% of the estimated local property taxes. Then we'll get another significant level in February, which is when people pay their settlement taxes. And then we'll get another significant amount in April. And then finally, they'll post our final taxes June 30th.
So then should we be worried that we're 4,000, 7,000, 4,000 in the red on 8047, or is that typical?
No, we should not be worried. Again, we're looking at the overall change. The more important piece is if you look at state aid. So you know how you've heard of basic aid districts?
Yes.
Basic aid is where this total 70 million, right, the total, that the local property taxes exceeds that, means or exceeds it, and the state aid in 8011 and 8012, we would get zero. You can see essentially, we're 32, 33 million away from being a basic aid district.
How much?
The sum total of the 27 and the 5.5. Because that's how much we're getting from the state. Our property taxes would have to go up by that amount, or exceed that amount, or our enrollment would have to decline significantly, which we don't want. That would significantly reduce the 70 million. So, or some combination thereof, which is typically what happens. So a lot of times, districts go into basic aid when they're declining enrollment, and their property taxes are going up significantly, okay? So this is kind of the calculations that we do, but we're a long way away. We don't know our final unduplicated count. This reflects an increase in our projected unduplicated count. I think that the district team did a really good job getting out there and trying to get our free and reduced meal applications up, got the word out, and so generally, those are up. We're trying to be conservative here, because they're not certified yet. Our ADA is down, but our unduplicated, we believe, is up. So the net change is about 37,000. But we're going to redo this in February, when we get ready for Second Interim. And then finally, we'll redo it in April, once we know what our final P2 is, if that will be the drive where our ADA really is.
What about absences? Does that affect? I know we do the count, but then as the school year progresses, and the absences pile up?
That's our average daily attendance. So absences affect our ADA.
Right.
So I'm projecting, based on, I look at last year's P2, and I say, okay, based on the grade span of the schools, the charter schools in particular, how did their ADA look by grade level? So K3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12, and I use, I project where I think our attendance is going to be. I don't know where it's going to be. If we have a terrible flu season, we could get impacted. If we have a mild flu season, it could benefit us. And so, having parents know that bringing their children, not their sick children, their children to school every day, not taking vacations and set honor before the end of March, helps us from a financial perspective. We lose about, easily, $60 a day per student. So every time a student is out, we lose 60-plus dollars per day. So when you multiply that by 7,500 students, 60 times 7,500, and every student gets one day off, that's a lot of money, okay?
And is, I mean, you talked about getting parents to do the free and reduced. Is there outreach also about absences as well?
We've done a lot of outreach, and I know the principals do a lot of outreach in their newsletters and stuff, trying to encourage. You know, again, we don't want students to come to school sick.
Of course not.
But we do want students, if they have a doctor's appointment in the morning or in the afternoon, we get funded if your student or if a student attends any portion of the day. So if they come in in the morning, and then they go to a doctor's or a dentist or whatever point in the afternoon, we get a full day of funding. They don't have to attend the whole day for us to get funded, only any portion of the day. So those are important messages that we try to get out to our community, and I know the principals work hard at it.
Yeah, social media's really been pushing it, too.
So, that's, it's an important topic of conversation, because the reality is, it's $70 million. That's the majority of our funding comes from the LCFF now. Okay, moving down, this is MAH money, so this is Medi-Cal money that we request reimbursement on, that's what the 29, and that's specifically related to South County, this 29,000. State revenues, you can see there's not a lot of decrease or changes. Most of that is evaluating our one-time money and making sure what our actual block rent is versus that one time, and making adjustments to bring those in line. Interest earnings, we're tracking up. We've looked at the interest earnings for our first quarter, and we believe that reasonably we can increase our interest earnings projections for the year.
Oh, great.
Interest rates are going up, and that's a good thing. Other local revenues, that's generally local donations. And so you will see every budget revision we break, you will see that those go up, because we budget them as we receive them. And then the contribution to special education did increase. This is primarily related to the PFT retro that we posted, and we'll talk about that in a moment. So special education, we have lots of teachers in special ed, that's on the restricted side of the budget, so if we increase salary benefits, we need to increase our contributions. So going on to the next page, this is where we really start looking at our expenditure side of the unrestricted budget. Again, you're going to see some increases in the certificate salaries, and that's because of the PFT retro that we're thrilled that we were able to provide. And by the way, the retro hit today, so our PFT unit members got their retro check today, so we're very excited about that. You were able to do that in time for Christmas, and that's wonderful. You'll see a little bit of administrative increase, that's primarily because we have two principals that are currently out on leave, and we're budgeting their substitutes, the interim principals that are back filling for them. The classified salaries, we're adjusting for position control and making changes as necessary. We have not settled with our classified union yet, and so we have not posted any of those potential settlements. STIRS is going up for two reasons. Number one, it's going up primarily because of the PFT retro, but also it's going up because, remember, we thought the, at adopted budget, which was the May revise, based on the May revise, we thought the STIRS rate was going to be 6.7. They increased it to 17.1, so we're making adjustments for those purposes. And the purse rate is going down, because we have projected about a percent higher based on the May revise than what actually came in. So we're making adjustments based on any changes that happen in the state budget. And then health and welfare, we're making adjustments based on open enrollment, and changes in, changes potentially in what people are taking, they're not taking, changes in MTE. But we're also making an adjustment based on some prior year adjustments that we saw during the closing process. And then you can see textbooks. So textbooks has gone down 200,000. That's not, that doesn't mean textbooks overall has gone down, it has not. If you flip to page 6, under textbooks, in the restricted side, you'll see that went up an even greater amount. So basically, what we did is we were able to reconcile all of our Prop 20 lottery funds, which we use primarily for textbook adoptions, and because of carryover and because lottery funds are tracking up, we were able to move a significant amount of our textbook purchases out of the unrestricted number to the restricted part of the budget. We always want to spend our restricted funds first, and so. Materials and supplies, that's going to go up, and so when we close the books, if you'll recall, there was about $355,000 in site carryover and department carryover. Those are from those local donations, so we budget that for our school sites and our departments to have access to. Typically, that's budgeted in the 4,300 account, and so that's why you'll see those go up. Let me see, anything else of interest to comment on? Our first student contribution, the contract is done a little bit, because we were able to reduce routes. We're now looking at, we might have to increase those up, so we kind of will be tracking that closely. Utilities, so utilities is an interesting one. We are budgeting higher utilities. So we've been tracking on our electricity, and it is up significantly from this time last year. We actually have calls in to Terra Verde, who helps us do our monitoring of our solar, to find out why that's been up so significantly.
You know, it's up for us, too. Our end-of-the-year closeout was a lot higher than it was last year.
Yeah, and I don't know what's going on with that. So we actually are doing some research, but we are... So we actually are doing some research, but we are making an adjustment to kind of compensate for that. So we're not sure what's going on, but it hit several of our schools. So I'm asking.
I was not wrong.
I can either confirm or deny. The rest of this is just making mostly adjustments based on what we learned through the closing process. And then, again, all of that carryover and movement among the site budgets, different things. Field trips, you can see as well, things that significantly happened, that's because of local donations that we collect. Moving on to the next page, indirect has gone up because as we posted carryover to our categoricals, that's increased. And then we did reduce the contribution to our cafeteria fund, Fund thirteen. We reduced that down mainly because of how we closed. So our federal and state revenues for the cafeteria fund are up. We're getting greater participation. Patty Yalager, our director of food services, is doing a good job with menu development and changes, and more and more kids are actually participating in our lunch program, so that's good news. So we were able to close the books with more money, which allowed us to reduce this. But also, we're tracking higher revenues this year as well, so we've modified our button projections for this year. So this is a trend that's not going to stay this way because as the PERS rate continues to go up, that has a big impact on our cafeteria fund. But for now, this is what we're projecting. So you can see how the components of any fund balance shake out. We now have just over nine hundred and fifteen thousand in deficit spending. We anticipated that. Some of that is one-time in nature because remember, three hundred and fifty-five thousand is from the site carryover, and so that's one-time in nature. But this does show that we have a level of deficit spending primarily because of the salary settlements that we have. And we knew that, and we did that very thoughtfully, so. I'm just going to touch on a few things in the categorical side of the house. You'll see eighty-five ninety went up. I'm on page five now. Eighty-five ninety other state revenues is up three point five million or just under. You might say, why is that? Well, it's not that we're getting additional revenue, really. So we're obligated to do these STIRS on behalf of adjustments. So this is our requirement, that we recognize the state's portion of STIRS that they can on behalf. And so if you go to the next page and you look at thirty-one hundred, see how STIRS went up two point eight million, and the PERS went up seven hundred and thirty-one thousand? Those amounts are that three point five, three point five million. So we are obligated to recognize the expenditure because we now have a PERS on behalf of adjustment to make, and then the offsetting revenue. So there's zero impact on the general fund as far as revenues and expenditure balance, but we are obligated to recognize that.
So does money come in and go out in that case?
It's not even in cash. We don't really get, we just record revenues and record the expense. So it's kind of a, you make a debit and you make a credit, if you will, for those accountants out there. Anyway, I wanted to explain that adjustment because it looks like our revenues went up significantly. We just have jobs. It's just us recording, it's just us recording those STIRS and PERS on behalf of adjustments. Other local revenues is up again because of donations, athletics, local grants. And you'll see the increase in the special education contribution. We do post deferred revenue prior year carryover to our certain category categorical programs. Many of those are reflected in the expenditure side. But again, we're fully budgeting, so we always will show deficit spending in the restricted because those are one-time expenditures related to that carryover. So that is the general fund. If you have any questions left general fund, I'm happy to answer that now. And then we'll just point out, I want to go onto multi-projections if you have any questions.
I have a couple of questions about, we were talking about, I think it would be now, the future expenses and having like the tech refresh, having a fund to be able to cover that in five years. And then also the microgrids, if that comes up. Where would that be in here? Is that something that we are considering planning for this year? Or is it, I'm just kind of wondering where it would fit in?
That's a great question. So if you look at the restricted site, because remember, the board gave us authority to move about a million dollars with that one-time writing for the state. And so when you look at page six, and you see materials and supplies went up significantly, about a million of that is specifically related to that carryover for that purpose.
So that's where the, that's where the refresh should be in materials and supplies?
Well, that's where we initially budget carryover. So we're not actually anticipating spending that money necessarily this year because remember, the initial refresh came out of the bond for the secondary. But we set that money aside for future use.
So just keep carrying it over.
Sitting generally in that, if we were going to actually spend it on, then we would move it to a forty-four hundred and none capital equipment. But it sits as carryover in that category. And then, what was your second?
Well, it was also, I mean, along with that is like that special fund that we can, would that be where that would be, where that would be the carryover?
It's in the restricted side of the budget.
Okay to.
Right, but remember, there's also, there's also the big E-rate project. So you'll recall that E rate is a big E-rate, which is the infrastructure, the wireless access points and the upgrades. We got, we've received approval under the federal E-rate program. That is all accounted for in under Fund Forty-One. So if you look at page, it's boarding Forty-One, it's page eighty-five. This is the fund in which we will be counting, counting for the E-rate project. It's not necessarily here yet because we just got approval. And so we're just now looking at issuing purchase orders, and we'll see that. The purchase order is carried with it. So we're in the process of actually purchasing the wireless data access points that we're upgrading at all of our school sites and other infrastructure parts of that project. So you're going to start seeing that in the purchase order process. But this is the fund in which we're accounting for those important E-rate. And then if you go back Fund Twenty-One, which is on page sixty-nine, this is the building fund, and this is where we count for the bond proceeds. So this is where, in the spring, we purchased the initial round of those wonderful devices because we used the building fund or the bond proceeds to pay for that refresh. So it came out of this fund. Okay?
Okay. Wonderful.
Any other questions?
Well, the other one was just about the microgrids. I mean, we were having somebody look into this, giving us feedback on it. If we decide to make that expenditure.
It would come out of the building fund.
The building fund.
It would be part of the bond proceeds. Just like the solar came out of the building fund. So that would be a component of that. It would not be, it would not impact the general fund, other than in potentially a positive way by having our utility costs go down. And not have that come, I would hope for.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. Any other questions? So going to the supplemental tab, multi-projections are an important component of our recommendation for deposit certification. And so if you look at page one twenty-five, that's where our multi-projections start. So basically, what we do is we take everything that we know at the moment. The best information we have, we assume, step and column at one percent for our bargaining units, we assume. We're taking out, remember that three hundred and fifty-five, that one-time money? We assume we're taking that out, and we're adding CPI of about two percent. We're assuming about a two percent inflation on our costs and such. And any other information that we might have. We flow that through our multi-projections, including, this is now posted, the PFT retro. So once we post that retro, it becomes part of column A, which is the current budget, that then projects forward. So you can see, if you look at column A under one E, total certificated salaries, see how under column C, that becomes one A, base salaries for the following year? And then we add in step and column from there. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
One E, okay. So in other words, we now have an adjusted budget for right now that includes all of the raises that we just agreed to. And so now we're projecting that out and saying, how do we do? And we're assuming a certain level based on the school services dark board with COLA. So if you, so when we do our, see at the very top, the revenues and other sources, see how that seventy million is there in column A? That's our LCFF revenue, that we talked about, seventy million. We then have projected ADA, and we've projected our flat ADA, and we've projected flat, generally our assumptions. And we projected the dark board COLAs for the LCFF calculations. And then this is how it comes out. So we actually run those calculations through our LCFF calculators for the current year and several subsequent years to then project out what that revenue is because that's an important revenue stream for us. And then we say, how do we look based on all those assumptions? And if you look at C, we call them C and E, so CC and CE. See how we dropped significantly in the first year? So we basically, our revenues and our expenditures are pretty flat. And then the following year, some of those increases kick in. Now, this is not a budget. This is not even a projection. It's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a projection, it's not, a lot will change by the time we get to the twenty-twenty-one budget. But for planning purposes, it tells us, based on the agreements that we just made, are they affordable in the long term? This is the tool we use to determine that. We don't know what the COLA is really going to be next year. If the COLA comes in less or if our enrollment drops, we could have a big problem.
They're saying that it is at the convention.
Right. I did not use the most conservative, I used the dark board. We know that's most likely dropping. Our enrollment has been fairly flat. It's up, it's down, it's up, it's down, it's up, but not dramatically, twenty up, twenty down. You know what I mean? So in a budget our size, we can accommodate those fluctuations. But this isn't, I wouldn't say it's overly sunny and positive, but it's not the most conservative we're doing either. So I just wanted to point that out to you, that this is why we're recommending a positive certification because we can show through our assumptions that we can only, not only meet our part of fiscal obligation for two years out, but a lot is going to change between now and then, including salary increases for other bargaining units, which we have not yet negotiated. That is not in. Okay? So again, there's a lot of information. I'm not going to go over all of them, we have a very long agenda. But when we get to the action part of the evening, we'll be recommending that you approve this with the box of statements. Any other questions for Chris before we move on?
We are now at comments from the public. Before we start, I just want to read the little blurb. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allocated a total of four minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted and written to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board evaluates public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate and value input from the public, and we do take notes. Okay. So first, Noel Mullin, did I say that right?
You did.
Cool. And you are talking to us about calendars.
I am.
Yes.
Thank you.
It did get moved to the next meeting just so you could get your notes.
I did hear that.
Yeah, no, that's right.
But that's okay.
No, you're still.
And we want to hear. No small matter at this time of year. And we want to hear your feedback anyway.
Great, thank you, because there's, I'm speaking as myself, but there's a very volatile, number of volatile threads of this on social media, I don't know, or social media, rather. I don't know if you guys follow Pedaloma Families or any of the Facebook groups that are set up for local families. And I'm going to offer one other suggestion about attendance. So remind me at the end, because it wasn't originally on my thing, but you said it, you brought it up, and I wanted to offer a suggestion that I had offered to Honey before, from our old district. So this proposed calendar is, has both dual working parents as well as single, households with a single working parent. It creates a hardship on many fronts. And I'd like to speak to them, I wrote it in email. Do you mind if I follow my emails? Kind of look by the list.
Whatever works.
Okay, great. I just think it would be more succinct. So the obvious thing is a two-week spring break where the second week is maybe we will, maybe we won't, presents a hardship in terms of you can't really plan a vacation, and you can't really find childcare. And a lot of parent, working parents rely on camps, but there won't be, no business can survive on. Maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't. And it's very hard for them to pull it together later, and that is a huge concern. And nobody wants the district, let me just preface this, to lose money. Everybody wants the district to get the funds that they need, and it is a vital concern to everyone. And everybody wants their kids in instructional days too. So, you know, the proposal or the question is, why can't we handle it like other districts across the United States that have snow days and add them in? I understand when I read up on it that you want a fixed graduation date so that that isn't moving. But it seems to me how they did it in other districts is that they just add makeup days, the graduation day is fixed. And so they come back and do a few days afterwards. And that way, the graduation doesn't move, and that doesn't mess everybody up. But then they also can plan their lives. Also, the other issue with the second week of school, spring break, is spring break is a very expensive time to travel because it's an entire month, everybody is, and then you're off. We traditionally had early dismissal for summer break, so theoretically, you would be off shortly thereafter. So it's a lot of expense that comes up for parents, one after the other. The Christmas break timing is, the first year, really, really hard. I say this with personal prejudice because my birthday is the world's worst birthday. It's December twenty-third, it's the last travel shopping day. It's Christmas Eve, and I can tell you, having friends of every other day, it is the worst. But you must travel really by the twenty-first. I need to travel by the twenty-first so I can relax on the twenty-second and actually have a birthday. But in terms of planning travel, it gets so much exponentially more expensive and challenging to find slots to travel as you get closer, that if you go to school on the twenty-third, people can't. And what will be the effect is that people will pull their kids, and you will lose money. And so I am proposing that we anticipate that and not have kids pulled, but don't, try not to push the boundary past the twenty-first or the twenty-second. Now, that year is funky because of the dates, the way the dates line up at the calendar. But you could go on a Monday and Tuesday, you know, and at least have that twenty-third and that little cushion and have people go in the morning of the twenty-second and then leave, as she said, and get the district money. I mean, you know, we all have things reasonable when the dates show up on the calendar. But what we want to avoid is you losing the money, and that is kind of a no-brainer because it is so close to Christmas and is so ridiculously hard to find travel slots, and it's expensive. The other part of, the second part of Christmas break is no parent wants their kid at home past like the sixth. Everybody is done with Christmas money. January fourth or fifth, they're ready to send them back and move on. And their bosses are too, their business lives are too. And that's the other concern, is how do you find care? And like, we don't have family up here, not everybody has resources for additional childcare, not everybody has friends who can take them on. Camps aren't in because it's not around. You know, and bosses expect you back. A lot of, many number of parents said, my boss would be more amenable to me taking a couple days earlier prior to Christmas because they know how hard it is to travel going into Christmas. But they want them back after New Year's, and to be out until the tenth or eleventh is really, really hard. Now, I'm not saying that we need necessarily two weeks for Christmas, but I also, the other side of it is, is I don't know, I'm an older mom, and we did not get a week off for Thanksgiving. So I think that there was some conversation about, do we actually need to take an entire week off for Thanksgiving? Could we be in school on Monday or Tuesday and just take off on Wednesday like they used to? And those are additional instruction days that you could have. I don't, you know, I'm new to the district, I don't know what, I'm not privy to discussions that you've had in the past. But these are creative ways of getting more instructional. And honestly, everybody's fine with that because November is hard. You have Columbus Day, then in the elementary schools, you're getting two weeks of partial days, which everybody would actually would prefer to be out an hour early and only have a week, so that we're not having two weeks. not having two weeks of partial days to also deal with additional care and additional camps. And then they get a week off plus the two weekends. It's kind of like, the joke is called November, no school November. But, so I think that you could, there are opportunities for other days that aren't being looked at. Another one would be personally, I mean, I know that maybe teachers like having three, two, three-day weekends in February, but I don't know that parents and people who work need, uh, need to have President's Day and Lincoln's Birthday off. So I think that you could consider taking Lincoln's Birthday back and the one through the day weekend would be sufficient, especially if you're going to have an extended spring break shortly afterwards. I did itemize, obviously, sent an email to Rochelle. So, you know, I hope you hear that there's a lot of give and take and other ideas for where you could get additional days.
Could you send that email to me?
I would be happy to. Can I get something where, can you write it on this, like, on the back of my agenda or something?
We'll send it.
Okay. Never mind, they'll get it to me.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything because I think I'm so, so on time. The other piece of it is.
And then what are you going to, what she?
Got about 30 more seconds.
Okay. Well, I want, I want to talk about the other thing that she brought up, but going back in August, mid-August is really, really hard because it's so hard. I think it's so hot for the kids and then now you have a short, if you're going to add additional days and go back later in June, they have an even shorter summer. And I just think that there are other ways to get your days. And I would, I would advocate for going back later in August because it is so painfully hot and it is only going to get hotter, really, it's only going to get hotter. I think that that was most of that list. In terms of offering, so Nevada Unified School District offers makeup days on Saturdays, and they were doing one a month. And they were very popular, extremely popular. And they go from nine to 12 or 12:30. I can get these exact statistics. I don't know how they're funding it or running it. It's usually run by a couple of teachers, but they make up a lot of their attendance days there. And, and they're, but govern, I can't believe they're governed by very different rules. They're governed by California state rules, so they're making it work somehow. And they, they make.
It's Saturday school.
It's Saturday school. And they also, they also get, the kids who get lunch will get lunch, and somehow that works out with their, and you can, you know, they're a very approachable district, so I, and they're kind of partners, so I'm sure we could approach them and see how they make it work or what the infrastructure is that makes it work. But the parents love it. The kids have fun. They get to see a different side of their teachers, and they make up a lot of their missed attendance days that way. And they're, it's made a huge difference to their budget, which is why they kept doing it. And they started adding some more, like sometimes it's not always at once a month. Sometimes it's once every, as they get more, like every three weeks instead of four. I think those are my basic ideas. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Spencer.
Crum.
I wasn't sure.
Sorry, my pen and chip socks.
Well, no, I just wanted to make sure I didn't mangle it. I know where we're at. I just don't like doing my piece.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Just a little background on myself, as I'm, I've been a school board member for the last 14 years for Dunham School District, a small district that feeds into Pedaluma High, so I speak all your guys' language, I know where you're at. I, I'm here tonight, I represent the North Bay Officials Organization, I'm the president. We have about 85 football officials who officiate all your high school games. We do all the high school games in Sonoma, Marin, Napa, Lake, and Mendocino Counties. And, and so it's a pretty, pretty big operation. And I just want to express to you guys that we're, the way we operate is, we have a small budget, we're a 501(c)(4) nonprofit organization. The way we get money is our members pay a small dues every year, and then we assign you guys five football officials on a JV varsity game and four on a Thursday night freshman game. We bill, we get the money in, we pay the officials. I'm having a really hard time, as other organizations are, with Casa Grande High School. Normally I would just take it up with Casa, normally I'd come to Gary and talk to Gary about it. It's, it seems to be systemic. Last year we, we were paid probably three months late. This year our, our bill went out in August. I've made numerous emails, texts to the principal, to the athletic director. They, they seem to have pushed it off to John Antonio, who's your, who's your high school coach. And I really don't think a high school coach should have to worry about finances. It's his job to coach a team and not worry about who pays the, who pays the bill. I'm told that two years ago, when Dennis Brunt left, he started a Casa Grande Athletic Foundation. I'm not sure if you guys know about it or how it is. I know very little, little about it. I tried to Google search it, I can't find anything. I don't know who runs the foundation, I don't know who's the board of the foundation. I know they started a nonprofit. And it seems to be every time we ask for money, the school, the school administrators are pointing to the foundation, the foundation's pointing to the school district. I've been trying for months to get paid and I don't know where else to go.
So what we'll do is, we'll, we'll, we'll call, let's get your information, we'll call you directly.
Okay.
And we'll start there and then we'll work backwards on Chris, which make that call. So I'll, I'll grab all your.
And I appreciate that too, but the reason I bring it to everybody is, my background's also law enforcement, so I always get a little suspicious. So when I find that, that people are late paying their bills, don't pay their bills, don't return phone calls, don't, don't call back, a lot of times they have their hands in the cookie jar. And, and that's why I say systemic. It's where, you know, if I was on the board, I'd be asking where do the gate fees go? Where does snack bar money go? Why, why aren't, why is this one school? Pedaluma High has no problem. And none of the other schools, the 37 schools we have, have a problem paying us. But now, two years in a row, Casa Grande seems to be slow and really non-responsive. I want to bring it to your attention and hopefully, hopefully Gary and I can work it out.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So is it your understanding that all of those things are collected and given to the foundation? Or, I mean, they're kind of, that Casa's administrators are saying that that's where the money's going and the foundation is saying that it's going to Casa? Is that, or is that just kind of what?
I'm not part of that conversation. When I talked to Rick O'Brien and, and Dan Ostrom, Ostrom, they, 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 they're pushing it down to John Antonio, who's the coach. John is trying to go to the foundation. I don't know who the foundation is. And, and then the foundation says that's a school district issue and the school district should be paying that bill. And so, so the school district's saying the foundation should be paying it, the foundation's saying the school district's paying it, and I don't know where to go to get paid. And I got officials who aren't getting paid.
Right.
And that becomes a problem for me as the president of the organization because I got to pay my guys.
So it sounds like a UN Gary guess.
Yes, but again, I want to bring you to your attention because it may be a little bigger than just a, a non-payment issue.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that.
And Sarah, come on down.
Pedaluma Federation of Teachers appreciates the hard work our CSCE colleagues do every day. I think we all can agree that their work is invaluable to students and staff alike. We all benefit from the work they do every day. The Executive Council of the Federation, Pedaluma Teachers, 1881, voted unanimously to stand in support of our classified colleagues and their work to secure a minimum living wage of $15 an hour. We encourage the board to implement the $15 an hour minimum wage for all employees of Pedaluma City Schools. We understand that this will affect the current classified salary schedule and in no way tie our negotiations to theirs. Ensuring a minimum wage of $15 an hour will benefit our schools, our community, our colleagues, and most importantly, our students, and it is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Let's see. We had an LCAP, we had equity interviews, adult school celebration in McDowell, four of us went to the CSBA conference, a meeting with Pedaluma High School neighbors over lights, Casa Grande Preview Night, Kennelwood Preview Night, Brown App Training at the Sonoma County Office of Ed, PHS basketball game, girls junior varsity, and the CHIPA Mental Health Substance Abuse Workshop and the Resilient Screaming at the Pedaluma Health Center.
I wonder who that last one was.
Oh, I don't know.
Huh?
Okay. We are now to approval of consent agenda, approval of consent agenda by consolidated amendment. I move to accept the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I have a second? There's a ton of stuff on here. Okay. Questions, comments on the consent agenda?
I just have comments, so I can go last but first for everybody.
Here's time for everybody.
I think all of the new courses are really, really cool.
No, not the courses.
Oh, never mind, never mind. That's all.
But they are really cool.
Really cool.
Okay. Any other comments?
I've got a question.
Okay.
I think this is for Liz on item 9.4, food service and policy. It's really, I think this is going to be right. It's hard for me to judge, you know, these kinds of changes out of context, so if you could just talk briefly about the impetus for these changes, is this regular policy review or, and, and the process?
Yeah, both, both and, I mean, regular policy review and it was also part of a, of a broader audit that's being done. And this meets the, to update your board policy meets the criteria for the wellness audit that's done and it could.
Yeah, so we have a food service audit that's actually starting shortly, next week.
So is this a self-audit or is there an outside organization?
The California Department of Education is coming in to audit our food service program. They do it every three to five years depending on the decade we're in. It's really a USDA audit, but the CBE conducts it. And as part of that regulation requirement, we are obligated to take a look at our wellness policy and bring it into compliance with the law. So a lot of what these changes are, because it's been a while since this wellness policy has been flipped up, so there have been numerous changes in the law since then. So most of these are technical edits to bring wellness policy into law. It's important that we do it now so that we can be in compliance with our food service audit, which has a piece of wellness. Wellness is much broader than food service, I just want to point that out. It, it's, it's, it's a bigger topic conversation about how we handle things with our students programmatically as well. What type of incentives do we use, et cetera, et cetera. But there is a component that is also food service and so.
Because a chunk of it is nutrition.
Yes. A chunk of it is nutrition, but it's also, it's nutrition, not nutrition in the classroom, I mean, in food service. It's nutrition education, which is not a food service issue. We're in compliance from a nutritional analysis perspective in our menus and how we do all that. Patty Gallagher, our Director of Food Services, actually has a nutrition background. But nutritional education is a bigger piece of it that this, this policy also covers.
And this policy meets the requirement of having a wellness policy by updating your board policy? So, okay, it's not a separate plan, it doesn't have to be like a SIPSA or LCAP or anything.
And that's why at the last meeting we discussed like, why aren't there more things around mental health? And it's because a big driver for it is this, when it comes to the board policy, it's about nutrition for the most part. And so on our committee, I talked to Owen Liddeday, it was myself, Cliff was on there because of the Ed Services piece, Patty Gallagher from Food Services, and Nikki Jackson as our mental health specialist representative, kind of reviewing and going through this policy together.
So the focus for this particular review really was nutrition because of the driver of doing it at this point. It doesn't mean there might not be a different focus when we get together to evaluate in the future.
Thank you.
I do actually have one comment. I was in the wrong place. I am grateful that Phoebe Washington continued to serve our district and I appreciate her applying for two different positions.
And she is approved? Yes.
Well, we, we're. We're about, yeah. Don't chase it, don't chase it.
I had already approved her in my head. Okay, any other comments on the consent agenda? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, on to action items. Administration Human Resources Resolution 1920-11, Board of Education, supporting the California Complete Count in 2020 Census.
Yeah, this just allows me to, to start moving forward on census education.
And that is very important because it says how many members of Congress will have and what the, what our state representative will be, and all of those lines. And right now, no one that represents Pedaluma has any interest in education or funding for education. Mark Levine and Bill Donovan will give you.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I moved. Go ahead. I moved to accept the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and then we scroll to 2.1.2. On to Business Services. Approval of the Pedaluma City Elementary Joint Union High School District's Budget Revision Number One in the First interim report for 2019-20.
So I have a 30-page PowerPoint and want to go over it.
Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Wait, any other questions before we, I think we asked, we're all asked that, okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
So just want to thank Chris again. This is, when you, it's a bit of a shot, a shot in the dark each year in June establishing a budget. The fact that we are really relatively close to where we thought we would be is really a testament to a good CBO.
Yes, it is.
When you were in the ballpark, CBOs are really thrilled and this one's really close again, so.
Especially through your projection.
It's a, it's a projection and it's a really super educated guess, but some people are better at doing it than others.
Some people are more educated. I explained it very well.
Did you make it over? No, we didn't. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cool. Okay, next one. Resolution 1920-12 of the Board of Education, Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County of Sonoma State, California regarding accounting of developer fees for the physical year, for 2018, 19, physical year and the front-end fund or account capital facilities fund. Do I have a motion?
What?
We tried to make that resolution title longer.
Yeah.
It sounded like a state regulation. This is the title that we have to use.
I didn't include the government codes because I have to get your notes. So do I have a question? Okay, a second.
Okay, so what does this mean?
So basically, we collect out developer fees as you're aware, and we're obligated within, within six months of us closing the books to basically disclose, how do we close the books? All of this, the one through eight are all of the things that we have to by law disclose, and that's what we've done, we've provided financial statements and kind of how we spend our dollars, how we plan to spend our dollars, in compliance with developer fees, which by the way, has to be tied to growth. So like portables, because you're adding, you know, classroom space, et cetera. So typically, those are the types of things. So as we look at adding portable McKinney, that's what we're looking for developer fees for. As we're looking at additional classroom space in the future, we may be looking towards developer fees to do that. So this just discloses how we close and kind of what we're planning.
Are those grids possibly come under that as facilities?
That would, it would be hard to tie utilities.
Tie those in.
To grow. It'd be hard to do that.
But just the building of them because they're so expensive?
It, cost is not the, it's literally, if you're adding restrooms, if you're expanding a kitchen area.
Micro grids don't add anything. We're just retaining what exists on our campus.
So it's not like buying a heater?
No.
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, discussion information only. Okay, discussion information only. Educational Services, Kate, can you take away?
They all sound so cool.
I know, I just-
Yeah, some of these weren't even offered at college.
And I just want to echo that. Some of these courses I want to take.
Yeah, and then it's really important that we're changing up ELD and meeting all these requirements.
Yes, it's very-
So obviously, there's a lot of courses here, but at the same time, it's, you know, one of the things that Cliff's been really working hard on is trying to make sure that we get these in as early as possible, so students can make, and parents can make the most accurate decisions that they can for their students. So kudos to Cliff for that.
And I also really appreciate the attention to the Fair Act for a lot of the social studies courses. I think that's fabulous.
It's a cluster.
Yeah, so yeah, my question was, is it a brand-new cluster, or is it taking over the existing cluster that was kind of the same?
So this is actually, this has been a work in progress for a number of years?
No, no, no.
There's been a group of staff who've been wanting to propose this additional cluster for a while.
Tonsiders, really?
That's right.
I know.
And it's gone back to the drawing board several times to kind of, to be what they needed to be. So it came forward earlier this semester, and again, got sent back for some more detail work, and then brought forward. So it'll be one of, it'll be one of now four options for clusters, and that's what juniors and seniors take. So most of these courses, it's just another version of US History, or American Government Econ, or English 11, or English 12, in a more thematic approach. The only new, new course is the Race Class and Gender one, that's a social elective that's available for any student, you don't have to be in that cluster.
Do you have to be at high school?
Yeah, I want to take it. There's a couple of classes here.
Technically, yeah. So yeah, so they're excited to offer this new cluster, and it's an opportunity.
I'm just really, it's just we have such great teachers, and just develop these- So I have a few questions about having taught in that cluster. So we have, so they were always before, so it feels like there's a change in the way that the clusters are defined. So before, there was always elective CTE classes that were combined with the clusters. It had to be a CTE pathway of some kind, that of course didn't have any, you know, like capstone course. So are they now going more towards just this team teaching and social studies in English in a thematic way, rather than trying to create a CTE pathway that really is, that doesn't exist?
Yeah, so some of that-
Does that make sense?
Yeah, some of that is a result of realigning our CTE courses. So with the CTIG money, the CTE incentive grant money, was given out to schools to build back full pathways. So we're trying to, as best we can, offer complete pathways. So when they're tied to a cluster like that, and you just have one ops-
Right.
You're not creating a full pathway, you're not giving kids those opportunities. So, so yeah, as you noticed, there's no CTE-
So they're not, they're no longer going to be, those clear pathways are no longer going to be connected to English and social science. Except in healthcare pathway.
In the healthcare one, yeah.
And all the rest of them will not, will not have that artificial kind of-
Yeah, I mean, they still may, you know, you know, kind of group as teams, and still may be thematic, but yeah, they're not directly connected.
Good. Well, they're fabulous courses. So-
I appreciate that they're all going for A through G group.
Well, that's my other question, is that they're really not new courses. They're US History, and they're American Government and Econ, and 12th grade English. So why is it considered a new course, when it's just, I mean, they choose, you know, so, you know, they choose to teach together and to have it thematic, but that's not necessarily a new course. I'm just wondering, I mean, I think it's fabulous.
So it's mainly our way internally to denote that this is US History in that cluster with that thematic approach. But as far as the A through G, the UC doorway, you're right, we still have to call it what it is, otherwise, they don't recognize it, the NCAA won't recognize it if it doesn't clearly say, if it's a bad name, they don't like the little funny names we do. So that's more of our way to keep those kids clustered in the schedule. Otherwise, scheduling becomes problematic.
We put those courses into our database, so in Aries, because it's our database. So for purposes of Aries, it's considered a new course. However, if you look at the guts of it, like Cliff said, it's part of the prerequisite class, they're considered comparable classes.
It's just, we've never, I mean, we've had these clusters for 12 years, and they've never had a new course description like this. So I guess my question is, is this the way that we're going to be doing it now for, I don't know, clusters, pathways? I mean, is this, or is it just that they wanted to do it this way? I mean, what about the other ones? What about the two other ones?
So I only handle when they want to revise?
No, 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 no.
But many also must have, with the same courses that keep getting revised, like, right, like the lifting courses and stuff, like, I think it's just a part of a bigger streamlining of the-
But this was just, I mean, before it was just English 11, and then it was part of like, the M-cubed pathway.
Honestly, I think we've been treating it very similar to the way that the city treats building codes. So if you decide to tear your wall down and build another room, then you have to update everything to the new, the new structure. And the new structure is, if you're adding courses, like if they want, if-
If they're not really adding courses.
Well, this, because, but the guts of the course, they might be, they might be changing
the curriculum inside that piece, and if they're making a request for a textbook that's different, they need to, they need to be able to make those changes, so that we can document and archive what's the instructional materials that are being used for that particular class. There may be a comparable course that's using different materials, and they would have to do the same thing as well. So that we are saying, there's some kind of accountability, that you can't just make change, you can't just say, oh, I'm just deciding to use that as the core material. There has to be some kind of a process where it goes to-
Well, you could, you could in English, but not in history.
So the standards are the same, and in each cluster, these courses have the cluster name in them. So Innovation is English 11, Healthcare Pathways is English 11, it's just-
So it's English 11 plus the cluster name?
Right.
Is this just like another option for English 12, or whatever?
Right, that's all it is. But I, I mean, as a clarification, I've been advocating for this forever. So it's wonderful that this is happening. So if there's any question about that, I'm only questioning because I'm trying to get my mind around it, because it's like, oh, yay! Moving on, Student Services.
Let me just add, just a couple things. So the first course is just a revision, we've got a new teacher up the line with a CTE credential, so he's bringing that course up to code, if he will.
Oh, okay.
And that completes a pathway, because we only have the prior class. That 3D Make is a new course being offered at Casa, Candy about this offered at Casa. And that's not a CTE course, so you know, if you notice that.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. Yeah, I did notice.
So it's not a CTE credential teacher, not aligned with the CTE standards. And then, all of the ELD, this is, I mean, this is a big effort, so there was a whole crew of secondary EL, you know, English Language Research teachers, as well as just ELD teachers who got together with our committee.
Well, because there's new ELD standards, right?
Well, no, the standards are like four years old, but when the roadmap came out, it kind of gave the impetus to, you need to align.
Right.
And this is the first time we'll be coherent across district, across sites.
What a concept.
So ELD, no matter what grade you're in, ELD 1 is ELD 1.
No matter what school you're at.
Level 202, level 203, not no matter what school you're at. And these replace all existing ELD courses in our system. So this cleans it all up. We had naming conventions that were so confusing, and As, and Bs, and Ones, and Twos, and so, and some were giving ELA credit for an ELD course, but it said ELD in the names, or you wouldn't know that, so-
Unless it was ELD 4, can't they get ELA credit for that?
That's the one I'm talking about. So now, there is no ELD 4.
Oh, okay.
ELD, students who are in ELD 1, well, all ELA students, all ELD students need access to ELA. So only ELD 1 students can be, you know, can be blocked again and not have ELA, or the only ones legally that can, everyone needs to have ELA. So for levels 2 and 3, they just receive grade-level English. So it's not named anything special, it's grade 7 English, grade 8 English, grade 9 English, 10. For the ELD 2 level students, you can cluster them together, so it's still kind of a support class, but it is specific ELA grade-level standards, not ELD, ELD's in the ELD class. And then students in ELD 3 are in just whatever, they're mixed in with their peers or whatever English they should have by their grade level. So like, ELD 4 no longer exists.
All right, that makes sense.
After this, in January. And then there's like one or two more that'll come in January that didn't make it.
Well, this is a pretty long list. There's a lot of reading.
Okay, Student Services, 11.2.1, amended board policy, first reading for BP 501.6.1, intra-district open enrollment and- Oh, we didn't approve the educational cert, though.
It's just a first reading. It's just information items. And this one is just a, we just need to update our state compliance.
And so you know, this is just sort of the blush of the BP for the first reading. We also have ARs that add in a lot more specifics, and we'll be bringing further down the road. The BP on inter and intra is pretty broad and short. The ARs are where it's going to get into the ready around the lottery and dates and everything else, so you'll see that in coming-
Those come as information items, so ARs, BP is used to be action items.
Okay. Cool. All right. Future business. I want to talk about the date program.
I want an action item on voting on the Finch Draw product, like installation factors. And the cost analysis you did back in the day.
And I got this fabulous postcard about a very concerned Casa student about the use of plastics on our campuses. So that's, I would also like that to be future business.
Can we hit that?
Yep.
Just, you know, can we move to biodegradable utensils rather than plastic utensils, that kind of thing? Anybody else? Book group! It is future business. It is future business. I would like, I'm giving a deadline for our Governance Core book. The due date is January 21st.
Wow.
That's what, January what?
21st.
21st, because that's our next meeting, I mean, our last meeting in January. And I want to schedule a book group discussion. So if we all finish it by the 21st-
Are you trying to go to public discussion?
Yeah, so like those discussion groups, or we just do like that Saturday morning, something like that, a couple of hours.